Broke.
The time is now five o'clock. I call the meeting, I call to order the March 15, 2022 Policy and Governance Committee Meeting. Good evening. Thank you to everyone being here this evening. I am Judy McInnes Murray, Chair of the Policy Governance Committee and an at-large Board Member. We will now have introductions of committee members, starting with the Board Members, Administrative Staff, and Administration Staff, I'm sorry, and Board Office Staff. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Sonya Williams, the Vice Chair of the Board, and I represent District Nine. Happy to be here.
Mr. Seronuris. You want to introduce yourself, Avaro, Board Member?
Hello, everyone. My name is Albert Stronreese, and I'm a student member of the Prince George's County Board of Education. I'm so sorry, my computer battery did not want to hold me off for the meeting, so I had to plug it in. But yeah, hello, everyone. I'm so excited to be in today's committee meeting. I'm excited for the agenda items we have tonight.
Good, thank you. Pam, Board Member, who's the strength there?
Hi, I'm Pamela Boozer-Strather, of the Vice Chair of the Policy and Governance Committee, and also the Board Member for District Three.
Hey, anyone can start with the Administration.
Hi, everybody. My name is Valerie Irvin. I am the Board Liaison and the Special Assistant in the Office of the Chief of Staff. Good to be here.
And hello, everyone. I'm Sally Robinson, Associate General Counsel in the Office of General Counsel. Also happy to be here.
Bobby.
Good evening. I'm Robin Welsh. I'm the Director of Compliance and Ethics.
Okay, we have a special guest, Mr. Dickerson.
Good afternoon. Michael Dickerson, Chief of Staff. Happy to be here. Thanks for having me.
All right, and to our Board Staff.
I am Annie's Ellis, Board Assistant.
Thank you so much. May I have a motion to approve March 15, 2022, meeting agenda?
So moved.
Second. It has been moved and properly seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any extensions? Any nays? The agenda is approved. Thank you. Now we will go to 2.1 Public Comment. We have no registered, we do have registered speakers.
Approve of the minutes. 1.4. We adopted the agenda.
1.4, just approve the minutes. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm learning. We just approved the welcome in the adoption. Okay, we just approved the agenda. Now we need to approve the minutes. So may I have a motion to approve the minutes from the March 15, 2022 Policy and Governance Agenda Meeting?
So moved.
First.
It has been moved and properly seconded to approve the committee minutes from March 1, 2022. Any all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, any abstentions? Any nays? The minutes have been approved. Now we go to 2.1 and 2 Public Comments. There are five registered public comment speakers this evening. Ms. Ellis, are the speakers in the queue? Should I start calling them?
I only see Ms. Holland, who was number three on our list, and Mr. Lencia Calvo, who's number four.
Okay, so let's start with Ms. Holland. Okay.
She's on her way.
Unsafe Transportation Protocol. Hi, Ms. Holland.
Hello. Good afternoon.
Okay, you.
I'm Bishop Brother. Go ahead. You can answer the door. Hi, my apologies. Hi, this is Ms. Holland. So Xavier! I'm, I'm sorry.
You okay?
Yeah, he just came in and had some trouble and stuff. My apologies about the noise. But I'm sorry. So I wanted just to speak on something that kind of came to my attention last week. And it was, it's kind of been an issue with, I guess, maybe the policy, or I'm trying to get familiar with it when it comes to Eleanor High School, or just in general, high school. So one of the issues, like I said, last week Xavier got on the bus. I pretty much live in a very large complex. And in the complex, I believe it probably has numerous of bus stops, but it's two pretty much in our, in our area. Xavier was on the bus. I guess maybe it was an overcrowd. And the from, I heard two stories. I actually spoke to the Assistant Principal earlier today. But pretty much, all the kids, or most of the kids that were not on that list for the bus, were told to pretty much get off. And Xavier and a few other kids were kind of left to figure out how they were going to get home. I was told that they did let some of the kids back on the bus, but that communication was pretty much just missed. So like I said, Xavier had, you know, a hard time trying to get home from school. He had to catch the metro, which I had never personally showed him how to catch the metro. You know, he just kind of had to figure it out for himself, but that I felt like was, could possibly have been an, an issue or a danger as far as safety and trying to make sure all the kids get on the appropriate bus, or it's communicated that, yes, you can ride the bus today, but moving forward, it needs to be, you know, you have to go to a particular bus stop instead of just telling the kids on that particular day that to get off the bus. And then I also wanted to ask a question about like bikes or skateboards on the premises of schools. The Assistant Principal has said before in the past, I did speak with her about this, but she said before in the past that skateboards are not allowed and they're considered as weapons. So I just, just pretty much wanted to make those comments and kind of get an idea of, you know, what the policy is on some of those things about a bus assignment, and when that will actually go out. And two, the second thing would be whether or not skateboards, because sometimes he will use it as a method to, you know, get home. So that was pretty much what my comments were.
Okay, I appreciate, I appreciate your comments, and I should have prefaced it, the public comments with, we don't respond. We listen, and you have three minutes to speak to us. So that's my era. But, but I appreciate the comments that you've made today, and understand that we hear you. We don't comment, but we hear you.
Okay, I got you.
Right, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Vice Chair, Williams.
I would highly recommend that she send Board Leadership, either Dr. Miller and I, an email with those details so that we can get a response back to her.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and I would also expect that Mr. Dickerson is on the call now. So I am sure that he will be addressing this issue as well. All right, next, we will have Ms. Ellis. Is anyone else that one, two, or three present, or we?
Yes, we have Mr. Javier Fuentes, who has joined us. He's number one.
Okay, we should go to Mr. Javier Fuentes. 11th grade student, Laurel High School, Climate Action Bill, SB 124, House Bill 150. I'm proud of you, young man. Thank you. Go ahead, you, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. My name is Javier Fuentes. I'm a student in Laurel High School, and I am the President of the Green Club at my school. My goal is to create a better, greener future, which is why I request that the Prince George's County Board of Education support SB 124 and HB 150. For those of you that do not know, SB 124 and HB 150 are a composting bill that if passed, would create a grant program for schools across the Maryland school system to establish programs to reduce and compost school waste. Both individual public schools and county boards of education would be allowed to apply to be awarded a grant. At Laurel High, we're the first high school in Prince George's County to start a composting program in 2020. Today, we are once again collaborating with the city of Laurel to restart and improve our composting program after it was stopped due to the pandemic. Although our school is privileged enough to be providing materials by the city of Laurel to restart composting, there are limitations to our project. Students are eager to participate, but it is difficult to maintain that same enthusiasm towards composting when there's no school-wide education on it. This is mainly because effective practices like composting, which divert food from landfills, reduce methane gas emissions, and produce better vegetation by adding nutrients to soil, are still not normalized in a common practice in many places, let alone school systems. Supporting composting bills like SB 124 and one, and HB 150 will help develop habits that promote environmental education that carry over to a sustainable home life and improve the health of the public. It is important to note that communities of color and low-income communities are more vulnerable than others to the damaging health effects of climate change. And implementing waste reduction practices in school will not only create surplus food, which can be given to student families, but also empower communities like mine to develop habits to resist the disproportionate effects of climate change. Back in 2019, when the Laurel High School Green Club first conducted a waste audit, I remember that everyone, including myself, was wafting a trash can and gagged, and we vigorously waved our hands back and forth around our face.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. But once the waste audit was over, we determined that more than 50% of the waste produced in the cafeteria was compostable. I also remember seeing the smile on everyone's faces and realized that if students are able to interact and learn about the impacts of a process like composting, then they will generally want to make a difference in their own lives, in their community, and will carry the knowledge and experience with them for the rest of their lives. To me, this bill is an investment for the future of my generation. And if this bill passes before the General Assembly, it would mean that schools in our county that do not have financial resources to make purchases from an outside, to, to make purchases for a composting bill, bins, or comp, or contracts with the company, schools that do not have support from an outside environment.
You may finish your last statement.
Okay, and schools with a smaller proactive green team can alter into the grant program as a reassurance that the future is in the hands of the composter. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Ellis is next. Mr. Are we number four? I did number two show up. You muted. I'm mute.
Number two has not shown up.
Okay, so we'll go to Mr. Roman Palencia.
Palencia Calvo.
Yes. Of Maryland, LCV, Chesapeake, Maryland State Legislature School Buses. Mr.
I'm sorry, I was unmuted.
Okay.
I'm the board. Thank you for this opportunity to address the Policy and Governance Committee. My name is Ramon Palencia Calvo, and I'm the Director of Chispa Maryland, a program of the Maryland Eagle Conservation Boarders Education Fund that works with Latino families to build their environmental leadership to protect the health and their communities. I'm here today before this committee to request your support for a state legislation that would assist school districts in transitioning from diesel to electric school buses. House Bill 696 and its Senate Companion 948 will create an electric school bus pilot program where school districts in each utility service area will be eligible to purchase zero emissions electric school buses rather than diesel ones and no additional cost to the school district. All diesel is dirty diesel. Although diesel technology has improved, diesel is still a fossil fuel and is still dirty and harmful. It is listed as carcinogenic to humans, has negative impacts on children's ability to reach their full potential, and damages our environment. Electric school buses are a proven technology and are already on the road in a school district across the country and here in Maryland. Last year, this body adopted a resolution to create a Climate Change Action Plan Focus Work Group to design a plan to ensure PGCPS meets climate targets, better the health of students and personnel, and reduces costs. Chispa Maryland has been part of this work group, and we have seen the enthusiasm of students, parents, and other stakeholders to work towards a more sustainable school district, including its transportation operations. This bill and its style will support the goal of the work group, and is consistent with the resolution this board adopted last year and its goal of transitioning the fleet of electric school buses to zero emissions by 2040. Furthermore, this bill will also help school districts leverage federal funding. The federal government allocated $5 billion with a bid through their bipartisan infrastructure bill to the school, to the clean school bus program. When awarding funds from this competitive program, school districts that can leverage other resources, such as the ones provided by this bill, may have a competitive advantage over other school districts with limited resources or experience on electric school buses. For all these reasons, I hope you consider supporting this bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
And I'm, and I'm sorry, I just realized that I was out of the camera. Sorry about that.
Okay, it's good to see who, who was talking to us, so we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All righty. Ms. Ellis, we'll go to number five, Mr. Joseph Jakuta.
Yes.
And he wants to speak of climate parents of Prince George's County Legislature. Is he present?
He's on his way in.
I see. Okay, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you, Chair McInnes Murray, Vice Chair Boozer-Strather, and the rest of the Policy and Governance Committee. My name is Joseph Jakuta. I'm the Lead Volunteer with the Climate Parents of Prince George's, and I've also been the co-chair of the Climate Chair, the Climate Change Action Plan Focus Work Group with Board Member Boozer-Strather. We've learned a great deal about how PGCPS can make changes in order to benefit the future climate as well as save the taxpayers and the school system money through making green investments. And I urge you to support several of the bills that you're examining this evening, and when they come to the state legislature this session. The first of these is the Climate Solutions Now Act of 2022 sponsored by Senator Pinsky. This is SB 528. This bill is capital I important if we're, as Marylanders, are going to do our part to combat climate change and leave a better world for the younger generation. Many of these provisions will lead to long-term save, cost savings in terms of reduced energy needs from buildings. And in particular for schools, the Net Zero Loan Fund is particularly useful. As to our focus work group, we learned that net zero schools are close to being reasonable to do a current cost, as in particular with all of the geothermal heat pump systems that PGCPS has been installing, but it is the additional cost of the solar panels upfront to, that are, are the, the economic hurdle that we need face, but this loan fund for net zero buildings should allow us, as Prince Georgians, to realize the true, a truly acceptable ability to build net zero schools on a regular basis, which in the long term will save the school system lots in energy costs. I also wanted to voice support for HB 696, Senate Bill 948, which is the Electric School Bus Pilot Program, as Ramon, Ramon from out Maryland, the Chispa said, we, we, this is a tool that is going to provide an alternative path to financing electric school buses that will allow Pepcon P, or BGNE to cover the difference between electric and conventional school buses. This will allow us to, to expand electric school buses much quicker than we would otherwise, and also some great changes have happened to this bill that consider equity and to put in provisions to make it safer for the school system to rely on these buses. We also want the voice support for HB 19, Pedestrian Safety Plans, or the Safe Walk to School Act, is sponsored by Delegate Solomon. We learned through the focus work group that many students, especially living close to schools, have unsafe walks to work, walks to school. And this presents problems when it comes to drop off, because parents are more likely to drop off their children in their cars, and this leads to a lot of unnecessary air pollution at the entranceways to schools. If we want to encourage families to switch away from driving to school, or to students to be able to get there safely, all of our schools need safe access, and this, this bill would require that any new school or any school that increases its capacity will, will plan out a way to make it safe for this. Well, I also wanted to voice support for HB, oh, I'm, I'm out of time, so I would just say HB 1290 is also very important, and I thank you for your time.
But thank you so much. You were frozen, so if you wanted to comment a couple of more things, that's fine, because you froze for a minute.
When did, when did I freeze?
Um, help me, somebody.
When you mentioned the House Bills.
House Bill.
You were on House Bill 1290, Joseph, when you froze.
Oh, I was just going to say I would also support House Bill 1290. I, I, we was, voice support for that since it'll provide financing for under schools and to install solar and, as well as schools that are in low-income communities that have often been neglected by school funding.
Appreciate that. Thank you so much, and thank you, Ms. Irvin, for helping. We appreciate everyone who registered to speak to us tonight. And as I said before, we heard you, so your comments were not made in vain. I would like to acknowledge the presence of our Chair of the Board, Ms. Dr. Juanita Miller. Do you want to introduce yourself or say anything?
I'm good. Thank you.
All right.
Hello, everyone.
All right, we will now go to Policies to Review for Action. Today, we have one policy to review for action, and that's the Draft Policy 5143, Bullying, Harassment, and Intimidation. I will yield the floor to Ms. Welsh for a summary of the revisions to this policy.
Good evening. Before I begin reviewing the changes to the Draft Policy 5143, Bullying, Harassment, or Intimidation, I did want to say how happy we are to have Michael Dickerson here, and he would like to share with the committee how the Administration plans to support the committee. So, Mr. Dickerson?
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone, and I'll be brief, I promise. I did want to take this opportunity to come to the Policy and Governance Committee to share some exciting news that the Administration has been looking at over the last few weeks, and certainly that will have an impact with this committee. We've been looking to restructure some of our offices into one office. I think it's important here to note it'll be cost neutral, so of no added cost to the school system or the board. But we're going to create an Office of Government Relations, Compliance, and Procedures. And what this will do is bring together a group of officers that have been working. I don't want to say in silos, because they've been working together, but they've been working independent of each other. We're going to put them under one umbrella, and we think this is just going to make sense, both for how we operate on a daily day basis, but also for how we provide services to the board. I think the most important thing for me to say here today is that this is a partnership in many school systems, and I've worked in several where there is a, an administration board dynamic that it's almost confrontational, or at least adversarial. And we don't have that here, and we're not going to have that here. And so when there are opportunities to look for ways to work better together, we certainly want to do that on the Administration side. And the creation of this office is really about that. We know that we'll be doing a lot of policy work with and for the board, and we're happy to do that. We've got the right people here in, in this group to do it. But we understand that that's work that not only benefits the board, but also benefits the Administration, and we'll continue to do the administrative procedures. And so I really wanted to take this opportunity to share that news with this committee, because I think it's so important that you'll understand where we are as an Administration and how we consider you partners. And, and Dr. Golson makes, wants to make that very clear, and that's why I'm here today. I do have a 5:30, so I'll stop there in case there's a question or two, but I just wanted to come and share that information, and thank you all for the opportunity.
Well, I appreciate it. And before I entertain questions, I just want to thank you for having this vision. Because I also, and I think the majority of the board believes that it should be a partnership. And this committee is one that can model that. So we're looking forward to working with the new office. I see Vice Chair Boozer-Strather's hand.
Yeah, thank you so much. I just want to echo that this is really welcome news and moving in a direction that I fully support. I remember when I joined the board in 2018, I was, you know, I, I, of course, had been a parent advocate and a community advocate, going to Annapolis for lots of, you know, lobby nights, and, and I, I came closer to this system, and I said, where's the PGCPS Lobby Day, like Legislative Day? Like, this doesn't make any sense. I'm like, no wonder we're not getting new school construction money, and, you know, like, we're not winning in Annapolis. And we, and I learned that, you know, we really weren't structured for the parent.
And. You're freezing.
Schools.
Board Member Strather, you're freezing now.
It's worse than the. Especially because I would just want to thank you.
Okay, you froze for a minute. So, but, but we appreciate your comments. We will go to.
Yeah, well, I, I appreciate it. Thank you. I'll, I'll follow up if you didn't hear everything I said, but I, it's just great. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we'll go to Board Member and Vice Chair of the Board, Williams.
You, I appreciate the change as well. I think that it's great that we're able to find efficiencies in the Administration that will support this wonderful relationship we have with the Administration as Board Members. But my question was, just a little bit more clarity. You mentioned that you were going to consolidate offices. Can you tell me which offices those are?
Yeah, absolutely. The Office of Compliance, the Government Relations, you know, Ms. Irvin reports through the Chief of Staff's office, so she'll be a member. Ms. Welsh will certainly be a member, and, and the staff you have here will all be part of the new office. We also have Joe Day Newsome, who's a member of the Chief of Staff's team, who will partner with this group as well. And I know that Ms. Welsh has a couple other staff members on her team, and really, we'll be working not just on policies and administrative procedures, but the legislative work that Ms. Irvin does, and then compliance that Ms. Welsh and Joe Day Newsome also take part in. So it just makes sense, and what I really like about this is that we won't have silos, right? And so when Ms. Welsh is perhaps overwhelmed, other members of the team will be able to come over and help her on those duties, and when Ms. Irvin is overwhelmed in Annapolis, as we are currently in that situation, those team members will come and help with that work as well. And so really, it's about tearing down those silos of, this is my work, and I'm only going to do this to work as a group, not just for the Administration, as I said, but also with and for the board. And I just think that's important.
And I wish, really. And so will that fall under, under the Chief of Staff office, or will it fall under another?
Yeah, no, thanks for the clar, for the clarifying question. It'll fall under the Chief of Staff still, and it'll be effective July 1 for terms of, of how we structurally, when we change. But for all intents and purposes, we're beginning this work. These folks already work so well together, and so we'll start transitioning in that direction so that it's official July 1, but we're starting that work already.
Thank you. It definitely makes sense. I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Anyone else? Any more questions before we go to Ms. Welsh for her update? And thank you, Mr. Dickerson, for coming to see us today. Appreciate it.
Oh, happy to be here, Ms. Welsh. Thank you for letting me steal some of your time. Take care. See you soon.
So, starting with the bullying policy 5143, just to give a little background, we actually, the committee, worked on the bullying policy and had approved revisions back in, I want to say, the last time was like July 28 of 2021, but because it was after the school year started, it would go into effect July 1 of 2022. But since then, the Maryland State Department of Education developed a brand new policy. I mean, it has similarities like the previous policy, but it still has a lot of new pieces to it. And so with the requirement that they wanted school systems to update their policies, to incorporate, and their administrative procedures, to incorporate the changes that they have put. and their administrative procedures, to incorporate the changes that they have put into their model policy that came out, I want to say, the end of December of 2021. First of all, just to let you know, we have worked, myself and Ms. Robinson have worked closely also with Dr. Faison, who's the Associate Superintendent of Student Services, because it is her division, her department that actually is responsible for all of the reporting and investigating and gathering data and providing training in the arena of bullying, harassment, and intimidation. The other thing is, is that we tried to follow Ms. Williams, a Board Member Williams, comment from the last board meeting where she had expressed the concern of making board policy a bit more broad with not as many specifics, so that the procedures actually pick up those specifics. And so we have pulled from the model policy some of the big picture items and incorporated into our policy. I have, in fact, I just spoke with Dr. Faison again today, and she has already started convening a committee that will be working to develop the administrative procedures so that we will have the administrative procedure developed concurrently with the policy, so that when it's all completed, we will be able to let MSD know that we have the model policy along with the administrative procedure, which meets all the requirements that their model policy is requiring. And what MSD is requesting is that we just provide them a link to our policy and administrative procedure. They just want to make sure that we have done that. So we will have that together, the policy, our policy, and the administrative procedure. So one, just to give the bit, and this is very broad, but probably the big change is that the model policy incorporated had to do with communication in terms of letting people know that they need to report when they've either been bullied or they have saw have seen someone else been bullied. You know, they've been subject to that so that they can report, as well as they wanted to make sure that model policies, that policies include something that has to do with reporting, actually bullying, and then investigating bullying. And then also, once they have investigated a bully incident to and give notice to both the parent of the of the targeted student, as well as the parent of the of the person who was doing the bullying. So we have incorporated that into the into the board's policy. So when you go through the policy, the big changes you're going to see is, and this, some of this is definitely from the model policy. There have been expanded definitions for bullying, cyberbullying, harassment, intimidation, and retaliation. Plus, we have also included new definitions for targeted student and school-sponsored activities. They the model policy doesn't reference victims anymore. They reference targeted students. So that's why we switched our policy over to so that it is addressing targeted students and then and taking out the word victim. We also, and this is at the suggestion of the person who's responsible for our restorative practices training. And he said that we really should not have restorative practices under as an intervention, but it should be a prevention. So we did make that switch in the language so that it now sits under a prevention, because if there's been, if someone has been subjected to bullying, then essence, there is a they have been treated very poorly, and it's been an imbalance of power. So when you think of like one of the restorative practices, peer mediation, well, at that point, we're no longer doing mediation, because someone has been has been has been targeted and has there is that imbalance of power. So we're beyond that. However, it is absolutely a very good prevention method and which the students are, and I know they have been doing training on restorative practices, where students learn when they have disagreements or conflict that they can solve some of those problems without taking a more aggressive stance through the use of restorative practice practices. So we did include that under that. We did include a section that addresses their actual reporting. Oh, I just saw, oh, I I, oh, I see, just showing the screen. And then we also included a section that had for investigation, and then a part that says about letting the parents of both the targeted student and the student who was doing the bullying be given notice to them about the the results of the investigation. So those are the absolute big changes. And I know, so I did also talk to Ms. Faison or Dr. Faison about the due date, because originally, the state came out, I think, and said February, and then it was the change to March. But as it turns out, just on March 7, they the Student Services, Dr. Faison, received from MSD the revised investigation forms and reporting forms. So the state itself is trying to get caught up to send their stuff. So they just they just received these new forms. So and what her guidance has been from MSD is they want to make sure that all policies and administrative procedures are in place to start July 1, all new investigation forms, report forms, that also we make changes to like the Students' Rights and Responsibility Handbook, where it addresses bullying, so that everything is in alignment, and we are ready to go and be able to implement starting July 1, 2022.
Thank you, Ms. Walsh. That was a very good. You guys have done a lot of work, and I appreciate it. So as far as aligning the AP and the handbook, you guys will do that and report back to us, correct?
Well, I know that once we complete finalize our administrative procedure, Dr. Golson does provide the board a copy of the administrative procedure so that you that you absolutely get an opportunity to view it and make sure that it is in alignment with the actual policy.
Okay, and and I guess you guys will determine when to align the handbook, is that?
We'll we'll have that ready so by July 1 also, because that has to be ready to go for the school year.
Okay, so for my housekeeping, I will ask a question around July. Well, maybe the last week of June, as to where you are with that, okay?
Okay, that sounds good.
Now, I, Ms. Board Member Williams, your hand never went down, but it did come back up? It didn't. Okay, so Vice Chair Boozer Struthers.
Yeah, thank you, and hopefully you can hear me better. I did switch my Wi-Fi. So the part that I know that I hear the most from parents about is the investigation of acts of bullying, harassment, or intimidation. There's the term promptly conduct an adequate, reliable, and impartial investigation. What will promptly be defined in the administrative procedure? Is there a timeframe by which this should begin, once the report is made?
So that I would need to follow up again with Dr. Faison, because that would be the group that would put that administrative procedure together. But that's something we absolutely could certainly, I could address with her.
Okay, great. Yeah, thank you. I think that's important to know. And I just want to, you know, thank you for be the notification part, because that is very frustrating for families when these incidences happen, and there's a sense of not knowing or understanding, you know, the outcome. So I just want to thank you. Thank you for that section.
Board Member Williams. You're on mute.
I thought I lowered, but I do have.
You didn't lower it, so I thought it went back up. I'm sorry.
It I did lower it, but then it went back, I guess. Anyway, I'm glad that I'm able to speak on this. The I agree with Board Member Boozer Struthers regarding the notification piece. I think it's so important that parents, especially those students that are the ones receiving the bullying, know that there is a policy that the other parent is notified. And I'm trying to pause, because I I don't quite have the new language of the victim versus the person that's causing the bullying. I think it's very important that we have a formal notification process, because we we get emails all the time when a parent is the parent of the child that has received the bullying acts. They want to, you know, somehow ensure that the parent of that other child is notified, and what happens, and things like that. And so I appreciate that, and I love the fact that we have changed the language for the students. And on those vague terms like prompt or as soon as possible, I would I would anticipate that the the procedure would have, you know, three days after, no later than three days after, within 24 hours and things like that. And and I just think that with that, with this policy, the way it's written now, with these sort of the broader terminology, we're able to move quicker to revise the procedure when those situations occur, that something new has come up in how we operate the school. So this gives the administration the more ability to to make those modifications in real time. So I I think that this is this is great. The the one thing that really stands out for me is when we're dealing with the preventive measure of bullying, do we address in this policy, or is it necessary to address in this policy, that information that we provide to students to sort of give them some ideas on how to deal with situations that may go into a bullying? So if if a student is is coming into school, and maybe their shoes aren't as the best, the new, the the most fashionable, we have a process in which students are given information about how to report if something, or what to look out for. In the beginning of the year, I believe that's when that occurred, when they talk over the processes and procedures and and things to look for. Is that addressed in? Do we have something in the policy that states that the school system will provide preventive measures or information that will give students ideas on how to deal with this in advance? Bullying from a.
So in the in the prevention section, it actually does address, and this this was also from before. Well, first of all, it's about informing everyone about the bullying form. We actually now have the online bullying application, application where they can just get online. And then so that that's there, as well as providing more training on what's the causes of bullying? What are the consequences if you do bully? Making sure people, there's a school-wide evidence-based type of approach, so that we're looking at climate change, you know, in terms of the culture in a school, to help people be more conscious of this and pay closer attention. So they have they that had that was actually language that was previously in the version that got you all approved last summer. That was new language that had been included, so put to be implemented for July 1 of this current year. So it all sort of goes together, that we will have that there.
Yes. And so that's, I remember there was some conversation around that information upfront to sort of help head some of that off. Okay, and that's all I have. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Are there any more comments from any Board Member or anyone else on the committee? Okay, seeing no hands raised.
I have my hand.
Oh, oh, okay, now it's up. Okay. Mr. Board Member Sharon Ruiz.
Yep, I just wanted to thank the administration for bringing this policy forward and with cohesive language behind the edits being made. And also thanking Ms. Welsh for the explanation early on. When I first saw that restorative practices were being moved, I was kind of questioning, like, why is this going on? But definitely after the explanation you gave us, definitely do understand, I think, that having it as a preventative matter instead of a risk, I don't know where it was before, but having it as a prevention beforehand is more, I guess, makes more sense in a way. And so definitely appreciate you coming on and letting us know about this, because that was something that kind of raised a flag, like seeing that we were moving things specifically of how important restorative practices are. But definitely do appreciate that, and appreciate the language regarding the investigative matters, as Board Member Williams and Boozer Struthers.
Thank you.
Thank you. So wisdom out of the mouths of of our young folks who are paying attention to what we're doing within this system, and that's a wonderful thing. So thank you so much, Board Member Sharon Ruiz. We need to take a position on this policy to take to the full board. So if there are no other comments, questions, concerns, then I'll entertain a motion of approval to move forward for public comment. I'm sorry.
I move that we accept the recommendation of the CEO on this policy for public comment.
And let's add on March 24, because one move it forward for the March 24 meeting. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and properly seconded to accept the recommendation of the CEO to move the revised policy 5143 to the full board.
Maybe Chair Mickens Murray, I just wanted to to just, as it as we were closing out, just wanted to make sure that that I was clear on what I heard about it being modeled after what the state is requiring of us. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you so much.
So so it's been moved and properly seconded to move the CEO's recommendation to revise policy 5143 forward to the full board for public comment at the March 24, 2022 board meeting. Is there a second?
There was.
Second, it's time for the vote. I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Okay. Are there any nays, abstentions? The motion passes. So Ms. Ellis, ensure that this is on the agenda for the March 24 full board meeting. Now we will go to fourth point O, new revised policies for discussion. And we have two policies for discussion tonight. The first policy is to review policy 0104, Title IX. Ms. Robinson, please provide us with a summarized update on revising this policy.
Actually, Board Member Judy McInnes Murray, I I'm going to do that, okay?
Okay, that's fine. I'll just thank your name.
That's fine. So we have a few, look at the board policy that's on the agenda. That that was done back in 2010 was the last time it was amended. And it's Title IX is Board Policy 0104, and it's Title IX, which has to do with discrimination. And it's actually, there's been many changes with federal, both the federal law and federal regulations that we have not incorporated into the policy or nor the administrative procedure. And so at the recommendation of General Counsel, it's felt that this would be a critical one to complete before the end of this school year. So we are making the recommendation that we address and do revisions for the upcoming meetings. So that would be one of the ones we would work on before this this school year ends.
Okay, I appreciate that. So is it, are, is the goal of the administration to have a policy in place before July 1?
Yeah, yes, if we can do that, yeah.
The public comment.
As close to that as we possibly can. That would be good.
Okay, that that's what I'm that that's what I'm trying to get a good sense of. So you'll give us an update then at each meeting to where you are with this policy?
Yes.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. Did you have any additional comments, Ms. Welsh?
Not about that particular policy.
Okay, from the committee, are there any questions, concerns, comments about this policy? Board Member Sonia Williams?
I just wanted to just be mindful of the schedule that we are we're at right now. Do you think that we'll be able to do that with public, getting a draft, reviewing it here, having it go through public comment and get it back in time with us being in middle of March? Do you think that we're able to do that?
I don't know. That's what I need the administration to address, to let us know.
I think.
The heavy lift. I think it's a heavy lift, but I don't know.
I I'm not saying that it's impossible, but I I think if we lay it out on the timeline, we could see, because if we miss one meeting, then it may mess up the schedule. And so I don't know if we want to just sort of look at the schedule and lay it out based on our committee meetings and our board meetings to ensure that we're able to get those those things done in time.
And the other, the other thing is, we might want to look at the other policies that that we are recommending, and then maybe, you're right, make a plan on which ones we're going to do when and what that timeline would look like.
Yeah, yeah, because we 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 are, what, April, May, June?
May, June, right, exactly.
Our last meeting in June will will probably focus. Our last meeting in June will, will probably focus on reconciling the budget. So I'm not saying that it's impossible, but I know it, it'll, if one hiccup occurs, we may have to push it out or end up having, you know, maybe a special meeting, which none of us really want to have at any time, you know, in the summer. So but this one is, is, you know, these are important policies to get through. So let's just take a look at it. And, and we can, we can look at that in between meetings just to, you know, if you send it to schedule, I think. Is that okay, board member Mickens Murray?
Yes, and the, the, I guess the other caveat is what assistance do you need? And is all of that assistance available in your office? So that's the other piece to that. You know, if we, if you have all of the information you need, and then it's just a matter of getting folks administratively to put it in the right boxes and the right places, that's one thing. If you gather in information from outsiders that have to be incorporated into the policy, that's another thing. So I guess, what I'm asking is that you guys come prepared at our pre-meeting on this is Monday and give us a better idea
Okay.
of what you can do that's realistic.
Okay, we can do that.
Okay. And that's around all of the policies so that we don't, won't have separate conversations. And then also the other policies that we're going to look at today, prioritizing.
Okay.
You know, one, two, three. Okay? You have any additional comments about Title IX?
No, I don't. Oh, I'm sorry. Go.
I'm good. I'm good.
Okay, Ms. Irvin?
Yeah, I just didn't want to miss the, the fact that there is a bill moving through Annapolis that I reported on two weeks ago on Title IX. And so Robin and I have been discussing what would happen when this bill finally moves through. If it does, it looks like it's got the support and the momentum to move on crossover. So we may have a state bill to also contend with. So that may also make us relook at the calendar. But we'll be working through that. And as you said, at the pre-meeting, we'll have a little bit more information.
No, and I appreciate that. And that's the kind of information that we need to know. Okay, if you want to put something in place so that we are compliant, and then if you need to modify it later, but you let us know what you believe you need to do. Okay? Appreciate it. Any other questions or concerns around the Title IX policy? Okay, thank you. Now, it seems to me on, on my notes, Ms. Welsh, you are also going to address the, the new policy for pregnant and parenting students.
Yes.
Policies and reports.
Yes. So that last, at the 2021 General Assembly sent Bill 438, which had to do with pregnant and parenting students' policies and reports. That bill was passed and it does require, required MSD to develop a model policy around pregnant students and what the school systems need to provide. And then once that policy was completed, school systems need to develop their own policy, which again is a fairly quick turnaround because they're recommending that it's done by, or requiring that it's done by June. And, but basically they are addressing things like having lawful absences for students who are pregnant. For what, like if they have doctor's appointments, you know, anything related to, you know, when you're either pregnant or you're a mother. And then also if they need to use a lactation space in the, in the building that they would be able to, that would count as the lawful absence if they missed a class to do that. And then makeup work as well as that each high school needs to actually designate a specific location that would be a private lactation space. And then there's certain requirements that go with it. And then also making sure that there's at least one staff person within a school that can provide resources to a pregnant or parenting student related to childcare, educational services, transportation services to and from school. Some of it just the basic everyday types of things that a, a pregnant or parenting student might just not have that information and needs that information. And then train our staff so that they can provide what needs to, they need to provide to these students. So that policy is one that they are, there is a model and we will be able to use that to develop our policy for the school system. We currently though, I do have an administrative procedure that does dress pregnant students. And the, the, the majority of that policy actually addresses about, has a lot to do with the not having the, the absences that a pregnant or a parenting student would have, that those absences are lawful absences. So we already have been addressing that. And then we, there's a lot of language in there that talks about the educational services we actually provide the student to make sure that the student isn't, you know, losing education and that they, they can successfully complete their education and leave her with a diploma and everything. And then just providing some support services to the, to the students. So I, we, we do have an administrative procedure which we've had in place for, I think initially it was in 2008, and it was recently updated in July of 2019. It's not that old. The recent update said that putting the policy together should be, you know, fairly simple. Since we've already doing many of the things that they're requiring and we do have a model policy to work from.
Okay. Okay. Just had a thought in my head, which is dangerous sometimes. But Title IX, we're, we're effectively dealing with the males and the females, correct? I'm sure that there could be some male students, they might have the, you know, custody or something. Is that being considered at all? As you guys look at the, developing the policy?
Which policy are you talking about now? The Title IX or the parenting?
Either one, because I, I, I'm, I'm just thinking in my head that I understand dealing with the policy to support the parenting goals, but the parenting can be fit male or female. That's my point.
Yes. So the model I'm sorry. The model policy actually does address you. That's a good question because it addresses both the, the the mother, the father, or who might even be a legal guardian. So they are, they, they're, they're not just keeping it just to the female. They're, they're also
I appreciate that. I, I didn't see it. I mean, okay, I appreciate that. So this is a policy, did you say we needed to have this done by June?
That's what they are, that's what they have. Yes. That's what I think the requirement is for that. Yes.
All right. So you have to let us know your concerns around that as well. Keep doing the work. What's completing it, but let us know what's realistic. Okay, because this is March. When did you receive the model policy? Do you recall?
Well, so I will say that the, the listing of this policy has been on the work plan for the entire year. That was Dr. Golson. That was a recommendation that came from Dr. Golson back last, like, May. And it just, I guess, in the schedule of policies that were developed, it just never came up on the schedule. So.
I understand. Okay. All right. That brings clarity. I appreciate that. Do any of the other committee members have any questions or concerns around this policy, this model policy for parenting? Board members, Williams?
Thank you. In a typical year, do we have any statistics on the number of pregnancies or mothers that we're, that we deal with? And the question that I, the reason I'm asking is because when we develop this policy, it will effectively be for the entire school system, correct? And so I'm wondering if we need to have some flexibility in there for only schools that have, you know, parents in there for that year. Because if we're talking about designating a space in each of our buildings every year, regardless of whether or not there are parenting parents in there, then we may be taking away a space, especially in our overcrowded schools, that could be used for something else. If we could designate a space only if there is a parenting parent in that school for that year, then I think we need to allow some flexibility for that. And then when we're talking about the transportation piece as well, it will go beyond just during the pregnancy and it could be in, in, during the, you know, during the, the year after the child is born. So I'm wondering if we could allow some flexibility in that policy to have it in effect for those schools that are affected. And so I'm wondering, I don't know if we've ever had that kind of flexibility, but I think it would be, it would be a, a, a concern if we're in a school that is overcrowded and we're designating space and it's not being used. So just, just a thought.
I don't have any data, but I will talk with Student Services because they very well could have data, which give us some idea of how frequently and, you know, what numbers and does it impact our schools. I think is, I, I think probably as long as we are able to meet the requirement of providing that space when there is a parenting student, I, that, I, you know, there's no, I agree with you, there's no need to have a space if there are no parenting students that year. So I will work with Student Services on it.
And I don't want to, we could have students in, in the, in all of the schools that have students that are of that age. You know, we could have someone in every school, but I just don't know. So that's why I was wondering about the data.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Board member Sharon Ruiz?
Yep. Kind of picking, picking off of Board Member Williams on, I believe the necessity, the necessity of having a room designated when it may not be used is a very valid point to bring up. My question is, is there really any like restrictions or limitations on using the nurse's office or the nursing room for that?
Again, I would probably need to talk to Dr. Faison because of students, because under Student Services are the nursing services. So depending on how, I guess, crowded a nursing area is, you know, first, health room areas for students would be a major factor. But that's something she could certainly provide that information.
Thank you. Just wanted to bring that up.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or concerns from the committee members? All right, thank you. Now we'll move on to the last, not the last policy, but the last one that you know about. And that's the the Maryland Public Information Act, 4.3, new policy. And I have Ms. Robinson, your name? Will address this policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Mickens Murray. Just very briefly, one of the policies that the administration recommends is a new policy to deal with the Maryland Public Information Act, also known as the MPIA. The re, some of the brief reasons why the administration is recommending a policy in this area. Number one, in a particular order, but first it would reaffirm the board's commitment to transparency. It would also comply with House Bill 183, which was passed in the 2021 General Assembly and goes into effect this June, I'm sorry, July 1 of 2022. And that basically calls for increased transparency to the extent possible for public agencies such as PG CPS. And one of the ways that, that increased transparency could occur would be to make available for public inspection the requests that we've received and to the extent that the law would permit it, to make the requests that we've received over the prior year, make them available along with the response that we've provided. I know that some jurisdictions are exploring the idea of doing an annual report with like data summary and posting that data summary on websites. So that's something that we could explore as well. Another reason for making this recommendation is to standardize definitions and to synchronize the policy with the existing AP that we already have. And then finally to identify those records that would be readily available upon request. Documents that are easy to produce. And there might even be links on the district's website where we could just point people to. So some of the examples of things that would be readily, readily available upon request would be adopted board meeting minutes, adopted budgets, adopted policies, APs, the school calendar, the annual budget, an organizational chart. So the policy could list what those particular documents are. And upon request, they could be made available quite readily, either by, you know, emailing to somebody, making it available for inspection, or giving, providing them with a link to where the document is already located on the website.
Are you finished? Okay. My first, let's see. Any, any comments from the committee? All right. Did you speak to the AP that we already have?
So yes, we do have an AP and we've already been looking at that AP and making some, you know, some, thinking about some tweaks to make to that. So basically the, the new policy and the revised AP could be done at the same time.
Okay, I, I didn't want the public to think that we had nothing.
We do have an existing AP that's been on the books for a while. And we're, like I said, we're already looking at making it better and we would do the policy at the same time.
Okay, I appreciate that. Now, when I look at these three policies, the, the education one for the parenting, the public information one, and the bullying one. And we are in March. When we talk, I guess, at the meeting for our pre-meeting for our next meeting, hopefully you guys will really hone in on your timeline. For me, just looking at this, says one thing to me, that I'm curious to know what you believe can be realistically accomplished and, and we meet the goals of the MSD. Okay? I see Vice Chair Boozer Struthers' hand.
Yeah, thank you so much. Question I have for you and also, and it may not be so much what's written into the policy, but what you're saying about, you know, being tracking a lot of what people put in for MPIA when they're really just documents that are already on the website or can be consolidated somewhere. I did want to, to ask that, that maybe there is a way to add to that when that day comes to sort of educate folks on what, what is public. Because sometimes, every once in a while, not too often, someone will say, I'm putting in an MPAI request for X. And I'm like, I could just ask that question for you. Like, that's just a subset of data, public data. You know, like, you don't have to go through MPIA. And so I think it could be useful when that date comes to put, put something on a website saying, here are some of the things that are, you know, readily available, be, you know, that, that you can ask for subsets of data about students and testing and things like that. So I think there is, I, I like, I like where you're headed with some education on that.
Yeah, thank you. Just, you know, again, with the increased transparency, increased efficiency, if we can, you know, to the extent that we can educate everybody that there is a wealth of information already available on our website, as well as, I didn't mention this, I don't think, as well as MSD's website. So a lot of times folks, you know, they're looking for data, you know, on suspensions or arrests or test scores or whatever. A lot of times that's something that's already available on our website or MSD's website. And like you said, they don't need to go through that formalized process of submitting an MPIA request. It's just a matter of helping people understand how they can do a search on the websites and find it themselves.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other comments or concerns from committee members? All right, I have one more policy that the committee does not have because our student called me this afternoon. And I agreed to allow a board member, a student board member, to speak to a policy that he would like to put on our schedule. So Mr. Alvaro, I, I yield to you.
Chief Mickey Murray, and give one second. Certification purposes, it isn't a board policy. It's asking for the board to take a stance on a bill in the Maryland General Assembly. I know processes and the bill still need to be reviewed by different committee members, but I definitely wanted to introduce it today just to give a heads up seeing that, I think session ends in a little under a month. And so allowing it the proper time to actually reach the board. This is House Bill 797, which is on county boards of education, student membership alteration. Essentially what this bill does is allows a student member on the county boards of education across the state. As it is right now, we have many counties who don't currently have student members of the board. And to me, I think having a student member, having a student at the table where a lot of important decisions are made, allowing them that, I guess, opportunity to voice their opinion is something that's truly important, truly, I guess, valuable to have on a board of education. And so something I think that as the Prince George County Board of Education, I think we should be able to take a positive stance on seeing at our history, having a student member of the board, on how long we've had a student member of the board. I think supporting those counties where a lot of students want to be heard and want that proper vote and seat at the table. And so this is House Bill 797. I do plan to share it with board member Mickens-Murray and the rest of committee members, but definitely just wanted to introduce that to them.
And I appreciate that. So what we agreed upon is that he would share the bill with us and we will discuss it if the committee agrees at our next committee meeting. But we will have a discussion in the pre-meeting. Okay, thank you. Thank you. So next, we have legislative update 5.0. And we will hear from Ms. Irvin from the MAE legislative committee. She, she attends that committee meeting along with myself and she will give us highlights and legislative updates now. Thank you, Ms. Irvin.
Thank you very, very much, Madam Chair. Can I follow up on board member Alvaro Saran Ruiz's request on House Bill 797? Just very briefly, just for your information that the synopsis of that bill is that it would require each student member of a county board of education to have certain voting rights. And so as, as such, MAE has, has had a lot of conversation about whether or not it will be in support of that, of that legislation. And what board member Saron Ruiz just said, it's also adding a student member to certain county boards that don't already have one. So there's two parts to the bill. One is, is, is adding responsibilities to the student member of the board that they may not already have. And the second one is to add student members to certain boards in the state that do not include student members on their board. I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, Ms. Irvin. So our student board member, I think, recognizes that he has some research to do. And when he comes back to discuss this bill with us, he should have lots of details. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Once again, good evening, Madam Chair, Board Chairman Dr. Miller and members of the committee. This evening I'll be reporting on some bill highlights from MAE's legislative meeting that was held yesterday. These bills were discussed two weeks ago as they were introduced in Annapolis. So as we move closer to crossover, which is on March 21st, bills are moving quickly through hearings and committee votes and many bills have already been voted out of their respective chambers. Climate change is front and center in Annapolis this year. Last night Senator Pinsky's Climate Solutions Now Act of 2022 was voted out of committee with a favorable vote of 32 to 15. This moves Maryland away from fossil fuels toward an all-electric future. We have been tracking several climate bills and I will be reporting on a few that were identified by Vice Chair Boozer Struthers as bills that this committee may want to consider. There are 27 days left until Sinney dies, so we expect a lot of movement between now and then. And I will now report on the MAE, the bills that were considered priority bills of MAE yesterday. And I just want to warn you that some of these bills are very detailed as we're moving toward the bills crossing over. So if it's too much, just let me know and I'll just try to like cut it down to size. But let's begin with Senate Bill 362, which is primary and secondary education virtual schools revisions. So the bill sponsor is Senator Pinsky and Senator Pinsky says that this bill is designed to set parameters post-pandemic. The bill changes the requirements for a local board of education or the Maryland State Department of Education to establish a virtual school and sets requirements for students, teachers and services at a virtual school. A local school system is limited to one virtual school. However, MSD may authorize a local school system to establish a second virtual school on a showing of just cause. And a virtual school may not include classes for pre-K or kindergarten students. MSD or a local board of education may contract with a nonprofit organization to provide services for a virtual school. So yesterday MAE discussed, and Judy was there and heard this whole discussion, will oppose this bill if it reaches the House without MAE's amendments. The bill has not moved out of committee to the floor yet. This is a controversial bill because it would kill the Eastern Shore's Educational Consortium with, which consists of several secondary schools that have banded together to deal with the serious teacher shortage in rural areas. The bill is also problematic to rural schools because it takes away their option to use vendors. MAE believes that this bill is disruptive to current operations and supports the continued use of for-profit operations to deliver products. MAE continues to support state and local efforts to pursue the effective use of virtual learning initiatives and will continue to support programs to optimize the use of technology in improving student instruction. Here are some of MAE's amendments in case this committee may want to take this up. The first is maintain local discretionary decision to establish a virtual school. It should remain vested in the local board of education in accordance with state law. The second one is to remove the standard of quote "just cause" for MSD's approval of a local virtual school. Remove any prescriptive eligibility standards for families interested in enrolling their child in a virtual school. Remove specific numeric, numeric thresholds for enrollment. The bill calls for 10% of students in any one school. So it's almost like they just made up a number. So MAE wants to take that out. Remove the requirements for transfer from a virtual school to in-person instruction based solely on academic failure. And their final amendment is to hold harmless provision clearly preserving the local board authority and continuing operations of any virtual school or virtual programs in our case as well, which may be interpreted to be governed by provisions of this bill at least through the 2023, 2024 school year. So MAE believes that local school systems are already fully authorized to provide appropriate virtual learning opportunities through programs and courses under existing law. And that's where I'll end. It was, there's way, way more, but these are the, the main points of where MAE is on this board. And if these amendments are not considered, MAE will, will not be supporting this bill. So should I take questions now or keep moving through? I'll keep going.
That's your choice.
Okay, I'll keep going.
You want to do it? Okay.
Okay, Senate Bill 705, House Bill 1255, Education Physical Restraint and Secclusion Limitations Reporting and Training. This bill would prohibit specified public agencies and non-public schools with specified exemptions from using seclusion as a behavioral health intervention for a student. It prohibits with exceptions a public agency or non-public school from using physical restraint on a student as a behavioral health intervention. MAE supports this bill with amendments to address concerns with the scope and timing of certain provisions, including the elimination of seclusion as an allowable behavioral intervention in public schools. MAE's position on Senate Bill 705 is, is informed by the comprehensive reforms enacted in 2017 and the corresponding overhaul of the state regulations governing the use of restraint and seclusion. MAE recognizes and respects the work of advocates and legislators calling not only for strict limitations on the use of restraint and seclusion, but also for the absolute or near absolute prohibition on the use of seclusion in public schools. Senate Bill 705 would enact such reforms. State Superintendent Choudhry supports banning all physical restraint and seclusion in both public and private schools in Maryland. The bill sponsor on the House side, Delegate Eversol, wants to initiate a small pilot project to help to get support for this bill. There was no information shared yesterday about how this pilot would work. So on to the next one, Senate Bill 617, House Bill 547, Equivalent Access Standards, Digital Tools Non-Visual Access. MAE supports this bill with amendments to ensure accessibility for disabled students, including vision impaired students, to critically important digital tools and resources integral to their success whether in an in-person or virtual classroom. In 2021, legislation was introduced in Maryland for the first time in a generation to address concerns with the quality of access for students with disabilities to learning technology during the pandemic and shift to virtual learning. MAE's amendments to the bill include, just two. The bill includes in the definition of equivalent access a specific reference to substantially equivalent use of ease of use. This is all very lawyerly language Robin and Sally would understand. This standard is not mirrored in the federal regulations and could not be objectively measured or applied. This term should be quote "equivalent accessibility" or "equivalent facilitation." MAE requests that references throughout the bill are more consistent with federal standards when applicable. And that's it for that bill. The next one is Senate Bill 640, House Bill 1426. This is the maintenance of effort requirements and we spoke about this two weeks ago in the committee. MAE urges the passage of this bill to prevent dire reductions in local funding based on lower enrollment counts as schools reopened in the fall of 2022 after the pandemic. Our students are now returning to school in large numbers, but enrollment numbers continue to lag. Senate Bill 640 will guarantee a smooth transition from FY22 through FY2023. It would prevent a gap from forming for, for forming between the prior year and next year's funding levels, a gap that could be damaging at the outset of the implementation of the blueprint. Because maintenance of effort is a floor and not a ceiling, we have to be vigilant in this regard. This bill is still in committee. The Maryland Association of Counties has concerns about this bill because they believe that counties should receive a one-time only option without rebasing year over year. They are also hoping that the state provides more relief to counties through the state's significant surplus this year. And the final bill is House Bill 1450, The Blueprint Implementation Plan and Fund Alterations. MAE is in full support of House Bill 1450. This bill extends dates for the development, adoption and submission of plans to implement the blueprint for Maryland's future. Alter the date by which the state criteria to evaluate local implementation plans must be developed and modify the distribution of revenues to the blueprint for Maryland Futures Fund. And the bill, as many of you already know, will extend the state implementation plan deadline from February 2022 to December 1, 2022. It extends the MSD deadline for plan criteria from April 1 to September 1, 2022. And it extends the local implementation plan deadline from June 15th to March 15, 2023. And finally, it revises the formula for dedicated sales tax revenue to the blueprint fund. And we heard yesterday in the report that $7.5 billion in state, we have a $7.5 billion state budget surplus. Yay, hallelujah. So that is very meaningful because, especially because of the launch of the, of the blueprint and now everyone is excited about how we're going to share in all of that money. So I will end with those five bills that are moving through the process. And the chair, Ms. Mickens-Murray, may want to comment on, that was a very lively session yesterday at MAE, but I think we're all moving in the right direction together.
Yes, and the only thing, thank you, Ms. Irvin. The one thing that I will add is that we must not take the deadlines to mean stop work. We must continue the work within the blueprint. So we don't want anybody to come away thinking that, oh, well, they extended the deadline, so we don't have to move as fast. No, you should move with due diligence and you should also identify the true needs of implementing the blueprint. So those are my words of wisdom. So please, we, we will be providing oversight as the board. So keep working, keep working. Okay, Ms. Irvin, you want to continue?
I think Board Member Williams has her hand up.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I took my glasses off. Let me put them back on. I'm sorry. Okay, I see two hands now. Okay, Miss Board Member Williams.
About, I was talking with one of our senators and they mentioned something about implementing something regarding the gas tax that was supposed to be to give more funding to the schools. Are you aware of anything like that?
Not at this point. No, I haven't been briefed on anything about gas tax. However, I did hear a little bit about yesterday in Delegate McIntosh's committee, it might have been Monday, I'm getting my days confused, about how the comptroller's office is having trouble getting the tax from, from businesses who operate online. And so one of the things they're going to do to make sure we capture those dollars is to add a percentage. So, so as the taxes come through, they're going to, they're going to grab that money by creating a certain percentage of that money that will go directly into the blueprint fund. Other than that, I haven't heard anything on, on gas taxes.
Okay, I, I was just, thank you.
The next hand that was up is Vice Chair Boozer Struthers, but I see that the Chair of the Board is anxious and I think she wants to address the gas question. So do you mind Boozer, Board Member, if I, okay, thank you. So we'll go to Chair of the Board, Dr. Miller.
In reference to the gas, that was one of the proposals. However, there was some concern expressed from several, many delegates that they would prefer that money being allocated to education. So that was a, the gas tax was one of the proposals from the governor, Governor Hogan. Gas tax and then, and distribution of funds to fam, low income families. I think initially he had proposed $2,000 per family. Anyway, there was a lot of debate about that in, on the House side, I'm, I am aware. And they're now looking at proposing for that money to be allocated to education.
So Board Member Williams, are you, any more comments from you? Okay, thank you, Chair Williams. So now we'll go to Vice Chair of this committee, Board Member Boozer Struthers.
All right, thank you so much. I just wanted to make a, make a motion that we support HB 1450 and take this to the board on March 24th to consider a letter of support.
Okay.
Remind me which bill was 1450 again?
I'm looking at it now.
1450 is the Blueprint Implementation Plans and Funds.
Okay, I second.
Maintenance of Effort Requirements.
Yeah, absolutely. I second.
I have no problem. It's been moving properly second that we take to the full board. And what is it that you wanted, a letter of support?
Yeah, I mean, in the past, we've, once the board has voted and if, if we support or oppose or end up with no opinion, a letter goes if we, you know, have the support or oppose in the majority. So I did want to clarify, it's just HB 40, 1450, which is the Blueprint Implementation Plans and Fund Alterations. It, it's not the HB related HB 1426, the Maintenance of Effort. Although I, if I could ask Ms. Irvin, could you once again repeat MAE's position on HB 1426 SB? Although, if I could ask Ms. Irvin, could you once again repeat Maeve's position on HB 1426, SB 640?
Maeve is in full support of SB 640, like pushing it very hard.
Oh, then I'll amend and ask for both of those to be sent to the board that we vote, making a motion of support for our vote, and then that it would go to the full board, should that pass here.
Okay, so that Ms. Ellis can get it straight, can you repeat the motion?
I make a motion, the Policy and Governance Committee support HB 1426, SB 640, and HB 1450. And should that vote pass to the March 24 board meeting where it be presented to the board with a recommendation of support for both bills.
They moved them properly seconded that we take to the, that we request from the full board on March 20, support for HB 1426 and SB 640 and HB 1450.
That's right.
Are we ready for the question? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the motion carries. Thank you for that, Vice Chair Boozer Struthers. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're back to Ms. Irvin, are we back to you?
Yes. Um, I could ask Ms. Ellis to share the screen, but I don't really think it's necessary because I'm going to go through these fairly quickly. These are the bills that were, that Board Member Boozer Strutter, the Vice Chairman, and I discussed in terms of the climate package. And a lot of these bills are moving quickly through their respective chambers. So I'll just go ahead and walk through these bills and wait for questions at the end. The first bill is the Safe Walk to School Act, House Bill 19. The Chair might remember that this was discussed at Maeve some weeks ago, but the status of this bill is that it passed in the Appropriations Committee on Second Reading with a favorable recommendation with amendments on February 22. The amendments include language that removed the State Highway Administration from the review and approval process and added a section that reads, and I'll read the whole section, "A county board, not the interagency commission, shall make all determinations about the contents of pedestrian safety plans." And so quickly through the fiscal summary, the fiscal impact of this legislation on school districts is moderate and may impose a mandate on a unit of local government. The bill requires local school systems to develop pedestrian safety plans in collaboration with local transportation agencies and S H A. Some systems advise that they do not have staff with expertise to develop pedestrian safety plans. If local transportation agencies can provide the necessary transportation engineering expertise within house staff, or if S H A can provide the necessary expertise through their consultant at no cost to the local school system, local expenditures are not impacted. Otherwise, local expenditures may increase to the extent that local school systems require transportation engineering assistance from a third-party consultant. So the bill was really all about making it safe for kids to walk to and from school. And the bill indicates that if a school is renovating a building or building a brand-new building that would add 100 or more students, then this Safe Walk to School Act would go into effect. And so the bill's sponsor really wants to make clear that he is really trying to work with communities around schools to help state highway and the local jurisdiction develop plans that make it safer for kids, safer for kids to walk to school or ride their bikes to school. And that's essentially the extent of the bill. And so I will have to say this, that Maeve is not supporting this, but as I said to Vice Chair Boozer Strutter, my information is that we don't always go along with everything Maeve supports, and so this may be one of those times. So I just wanted to make that clear and put that out there. The next bill, the sponsor's Delegate McIntosh, this is House Bill 1290, Public School Construction Funding and Administration. This bill implements the recommendations of the Work Group on the Assessment and Funding of School Facilities, including changes to state funding levels for school construction, state-local cost-share formulas, school project approval requirements, and the implementation of and use of data from the ongoing statewide school facility assessment. It mandates funding levels for the renamed School Construction Revolving Loan Fund, extends funding for the Healthy School Facility Fund, and delays funding for the Public School Facilities Priority Fund. It requires the Interagency Commission on School Construction to update cost-share formulas and school space allowances to reflect the Blueprint for Maryland's Future and expresses legislative intent that a new work group be established by July 2024. Chair McIntosh said in her testimony that among the issues already mentioned, she highlights the following topics included in the bill. Update to the per-people gross area baseline square footage for community schools, schools eligible for concentration of poverty grants, instructional space for English-language learners, collaborative spaces for teachers, breakout spaces for group instruction, and for career and technical education pathways. The bill also gives school districts credit and some incentives moving forward. Some of those incentives are, the state would pick up more of the share of the cost of the building of the schools. Schools with a high concentration of poverty, 80% or more students that qualify, would get a 10% increase in state share. A 5% increase in the state share for schools that have demonstrated excellent maintenance of their buildings. A 5% increase to schools that build net-zero school buildings. A 5% increase in state share for projects with an estimated total cost of ownership that is at least 15% of baseline levels. And so I will end with this, the fiscal summary of this bill. The general fund expenditures increased to $50 million in FY 2023, $20 million in FY 2024, and $10 million in each of FY 25 and 26 due to these mandated appropriations. Chair McIntosh stated in her testimony that the governor has already included funds in his budget to cover FY 2023. So that's it for that one. Moving on to House Bill 365, Public School Construction Fossil Fuel-Based Energy System Cost Prohibition, sponsored by Delegate Korman. The bill makes a fossil fuel-based energy system ineligible for state funding when it is part of a new or renovation school construction project. It also clarifies that an evaluation of the lifecycle costs of public school buildings required by current law must compare the costs of alternative energy systems with the cost of traditional fossil fuel-based system. A fossil fuel-based energy system is one that uses natural gas, petroleum, coal, or other fuel derived from these sources to create useful heat. So, and ending here, the fiscal summary says that the local share of school construction costs increase for individual projects either because local school systems bear the full cost of installing fossil fuel-based systems or because installation costs for alternative systems is greater. However, total local capital expenditures for full construction likely are not affected. To the extent that individual project costs are higher, fewer projects may receive funding in a given year. And so on to the next bill, House Bill 68, Senate Bill 40. This is the Interagency Commission on School Construction Systemic Renovation Projects, and I've reported on this before, so I'll make this short. This bill was first heard on January 12 and was heard in a hearing on February 1. It passed second reading with a vote of 13 to 0 and passed third reading with a vote of 45 to 0. This bill requires the Interagency Commission on School Construction to consider systemic renovation projects as eligible for funding under the Bill to Learn Act, regardless of the cost of the project. This is a really important bill for everyone. An amendment was offered by Senate sponsors of the bill which puts a $100,000 floor for costs associated with this bill. Now, if you remember, the IAC had a floor of $4 million. So any school system that wanted to replace boilers, for example, or replace windows, those kind of smaller projects, they were not eligible to receive the state dollars. So this bill makes it possible for any project $100,000 and above to be funded in the IAC, which is what the initial intent of the Bill to Learn Act was in the first place. So this bill is clarifying that. The next bill is getting a lot of attention, it's the Electric School Bus Pilot Program, HB 696. This is the second year that the sponsor has tried to pass this bill. Last year didn't pass because of the pandemic, so it never made it all the way through the Senate. It passed through appropriations last year, but that's where it stopped. This bill would authorize eligible electric companies to apply to the Public Service Commission to implement the pilot program. A pilot program will be run by the Public Service Commission, which will last between three to five years. A utility may recover all reasonable and prudent program costs incurred under this program through a rate application and establish a pilot tariff or rate to provide service to an electric school bus. So beginning in 2024, a utility that establishes a pilot program must annually report on the program in consultation with each participating school system. Generally, under the Electric School Bus Pilot Program, a utility installs interconnection equipment and provides rebates to local school systems to cover incremental costs of an electric bus fleet. And the school system allows the utility to access the stored electricity without additional compensation at times when the school system determines that the buses are not needed to transport students. And there are a few other requirements, I'll go over them quickly. They provide for the deployment of at least 25 electric school buses. They provide for electric school bus rebates to participating school system. The limit total rebate, they limit total rebates to $50 million. This is so long, I'm just going to skip through here. It provides for the selection of school systems that apply to participate in the pilot program on the basis of appropriate factors determined by the utility with the approval of the PSC, provide and install the interconnection equipment and interconnection facilities for electric vehicle charging stations and train school personnel in the proper use of such equipment and facilities. It equips each electric school bus with lap and shoulder belts in accordance with recommendations from the National Transportation Safety Board, and they will provide the school board with adequate training and expertise to be able to operate electric school buses and related equipment. And so the local revenues from utility rebates and expenditures for electric buses and related costs increase to the extent that local school systems opt to participate in the pilot program beginning in FY 2023. That bill is kind of stuck in committee right now, it's not, has not moved. Not sure what's going on with it, so we're keeping a close eye on it over the next couple of weeks. And the next one is the one that we heard our eloquent student from Laurel High School speak to. It's House Bill 150, Senate Bill 124, the Grant Program to Reduce and Compost School Waste. This bill was heard first reading January 12, public hearing was heard on January 27, and it received a favorable with amendment recommendations of the committee on March 9. This bill establishes the Grant Program to Reduce and Compost School Waste. The bill's sponsor spoke about her focus on food insecurity and food waste and how recycling and diverting food waste away from incinerators and landfills is to addressing, she's trying to address both those issues. Composting food waste is the way forward and the reason for this bill. Javier Fuentes, a student at Laurel High School, the first high school in PGCPs to start a composting program, testified very eloquently on this bill. The Maryland Association for Environmental and Outdoor Education will review grant applications and select recipients to be awarded grants by the Maryland Department of Education, which will administer the grant program. The governor must include this in his annual budget and appropriation of at least $500,000 for the program, MSDE, and the Outdoor Education Association may retain a portion of this appropriation to cover administrative costs. So this bill establishes a mandated appropriation beginning next year. Local public school systems receive an annual grant funding totaling as much as half a million dollars statewide beginning as early as this year. Next year, 2023. The next bill is a bill sponsored by Delegate Forbes, High Performance and Green Buildings. We're almost done, I promise. House Bill 1165 was heard first reading on February 1, and a hearing was held on February 22. The bill's sponsor stated in the hearing that this bill will ensure that schools and other state-funded capital projects meet high performance and green building requirements. It will also reinstate a third-party verification process to make sure that the goals that are set are met. This bill also seeks to ensure transparency. So the bill expands the application of the state's high-performance building requirements to any capital projects for which more than 25% of the funding for the acquisition, construction, or renovation of the project is a state-funded project, subject to existing exemptions and waiver processes. However, this bill allows public schools and public safety buildings in sparsely populated areas to meet a lower high-performance building standard than other public buildings. The bill also alters the definition of a major renovation. For the purposes of complying with the bill, it reinstates a requirement that new public school buildings obtain independent verification of their green status and requires a Maryland Green Buildings Council to ensure compliance with the bill's requirements. And the final bill is the Climate Solutions Act of 2022, earlier in this report, Senate Bill 528, in the Senate, and now it's making its way over to the House where it will be faced with a whole bunch of other new issues because on the House side, there are several other bills that are going to try to fit under its umbrella. And I'll report on that probably on March 24. Sorry, it was long, but there's been a lot of things, a lot of bills crossing back and forth in Annapolis. So I'll take questions.
Yeah, hold on for a minute. Yes, thank you, Ms. Irvin. And all of these bills are on the site, on Board Docs, for those that want to read things in depth. So any questions from the committee for Ms. Irvin? And I see two hands, and we'll, I don't know which one was first. So I'm going to go with Boozer Struthers.
Okay, I think, Ms. Williams, no? Okay, well, thank you so much. And Ms. Irving, I did want to note that the addition of HBO 531, the Outdoor Education.
You know what, I have that on Board Docs, it wasn't in my, it wasn't in my packet. I apologize for that. That bill is up on Board Docs. It was added.
Yeah, and another positive one, and I did want to note, another one introduced by a Prince George's County delegation member, which a couple of these are, and I I am going to make a motion, but I did want to just say that all, this, these packages, this package of bills is very particularly supported by the PGCPS Board of Education Climate Change Action Plan Focus Work Group. Some of the members you heard from during public comment and who have been actively working in Annapolis on legislation that benefits public schools identified these bills as positive for the school system and has helped. And some of them, as you heard, this is, you know, their second year that they needed some improvements. And what we learned during last year's session was that PGCPS had to demonstrate readiness for, like, one, we had to demonstrate we're ready to receive the grants, like the electric school bus. If Pepco is receiving, you know, some funds from customers towards this to fill this fund on the upper school systems, PGCPS last year couldn't definitively say we would expand, you know, that we begin the replacement of electric buses. Dr. Facet has announced that commitment, and the Climate Change Action Plan puts that in motion to easily meet that 2024 planning deadline to benefit. So that, you know, I would call out that we've learned some things and we've responded, and we want to give, you know, and we're ready to say that we, PGCPS is ready to utilize these bills. and we want to give, you know, and we're ready to say that we, PG CPS is ready to, to utilize these bills. And it doesn't, you know, not all the school systems are ready. And that's probably, you know, the discussion that plays out at MAE about priorities. It's priorities for PG CPS because we've spent the last year getting ready to, to really take a look at systemic change for climate, climate action. So I did want to say that we're ready for that. The first one that made did not have a, was favorable or, you know, I think one, it's a more amendments about the safe walk to schools. And again, this applies to the new projects of certain, you know, the growth, which will be our schools. Frankly, they'll all grow with a hundred plus or more seats, I'm sure. But that, that, this is like, this is decades of neglect. And for us not to support this bill, even if there is some cost to the school system, we are just adding to that. Like, there are schools, elementary schools in my district that are walkable boundary schools with no sidewalks on the main corridors, you know, through these neighborhoods. And at some point, we have to say that that's unacceptable. Like, we have to support something that moves this forward, and it means that it puts some of it on us. But the amendments did make it less, you know, I guess, I wasn't in all the, the details of the discussion, but it did, it did suit at least one of MAVE's amendments around more local control. So even if this, even if this is not supported by all school systems, like, we, we can't go on like this in PG CPS. And if we are ever going to, we, we have a horrible trend of, of parents and caregivers driving their children to boundary schools. We used to have crossing guards and community engagement for students to safely go through our neighborhoods in the morning and afternoons and return home even without good sidewalks on their, on their way. We have lot, we've lost a lot of that in our communities and the emissions around our schools every morning and afternoon are, we have teachers who breathe in the air literally hundreds of cars while they help kids out of, out of, out of these cars. And that's a big shift. This was not happening seven years ago when my son started kindergarten. I could tell you that. And it, there's some other factors and we'll work on those as a full system. But I just want to speak in support of the one that, that may seem to have opposition. The others PG CPS is ready to utilize. And so I would like to make a motion for us to, just like my previous motion, to support these bills and bring them to the full board on March twenty fourth and the entire package, all the bills listed here. Thank you for the time.
There's a motion. Is there a second? It's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Before I provide a second, I just had a comment in particular on that walking bill. I wasn't sure, but I thought I heard Ms. Irving say that this would be across the state and for that walking bill. My only challenge with that are the rural areas, especially on the eastern shore, where I know these school districts are smaller, but if we get into the, if they are ever able to build a new school, it may be a challenge for them to provide safe walking, especially in the, in the rural, in the rural area. So I'm wondering, is there a caveat for those areas included? Did MAVE put something forward for those to amend for those areas that are in the rule? I think that in, you know, in the, in the suburban, in urban areas, this is absolutely necessary, especially in, in my district where we have hardly any sidewalks. We need to get on, on top of that. But I think there needs to be some kind of caveat for those areas on the eastern shore in western Maryland, because it may be a bigger burden on them.
Ms. Irving?
Yes, Vice Chairman Williams, it's right on point that the bill sponsor, Delegate Solomon, did include in the bill, which I reported on the first time, it's been weeks now, that there is a caveat for rural schools. For, for students who live more than a certain amount of miles from their, from their school, they're exempt. So a lot of rural counties will be exempt from this bill. That was one of the first amendments that he made to try to get support for the bill. And the other one was to make it local controlled, which a lot of, more delegates decided to, to support it when he did those two things.
Thank you very much for that. I second the motion that's on the floor.
Okay, there's a motion and it's been seconded that we accept all of these bills to take to the full board seeking their support on the twenty fourth of March. I need, so I'm opening it up for discussion because I have one question. Does anyone else have a question? I see two hands still up. Ms. Irving, do you have a question? Okay. My only question is this. Is the administration, is our administration on board to support all of these policies? And will someone be there to speak to the full board in support of all of these policies on the twenty fourth? Who has an answer to that question?
I, I will, I will attempt to answer the question. All I can say is that I meet once a week with administration. That would be Chief of Staff, Michael Dickerson, and with our lobbyists and a group of our team on all of this legislation. And I think this coming Thursday, I will pose the question to Michael Dickerson and/or Dr. Goldson about their, their support of the package for March twenty fourth. That's, that's, that's what I can do.
No, I appreciate that. To Vice Chair Boozers Struthers, my only concern is that when I look at all of these policies to implement them, there are a lot of logistics in, embedded in these policies. And the board, yes, we can approve them all, but it's the administration that has to provide the staff. And, you know, even with the buses, do, do we even have a complement of bus drivers? I mean, other than, they said they were gonna train them, available to be trained. And then with the grants, are these grants guaranteed every year or is it a one-time grant? I mean, there are just a lot of questions that are unanswered for me, but I think the administration is in a better position to at least look at those contingencies before the board steps ahead of them and maybe commits them. I don't want to do that.
Well, I, I can tell you, we are about to, to commit. We are about to commit the administration to many changes in our systems between two thousand and thirty and two thousand and forty towards clean energy, schools, electric buses, composting. And the electric buses is the longer-term one. It should take, it could take us fourteen years to convert from diesel to electric based on funding cycles. And to your point, year over year, access to funds. So if you're looking at the buses, the Pepco fund could be the fund that gets us started with our first twenty five because it eliminates the, it, it pays the extra cost of a diesel bus versus electric bus that costs more today and funds, and then we trade out our batteries. Federal government is sending a five billion dollars down through the states to fund electric buses. So this is evolving. This is the, I, I hear what you're saying. We are at a point where we lead or we wait or we just stay there because that is where we are. There's this, this kind of legislation was not your typical package of legislation out of Annapolis. Big school systems like PG CPS have not typically been doing comprehensive clean energy school emission, you know, emission reduction plans. We are at a point, we are at a point in time. And I hear your, and I hear what you're saying. So while I absolutely want to hear administrative response to concerns, we also, if we, if these, if, if we aren't speaking up on these bills and these bills don't get through, there will be no funding to do what we're planning. I mean, not none, but it will just be, we'll just continue in this cycle of, you know, the, the, the funding and the regulation, you know, this, the, the regulation piece and the, and the assistance these, these pilot programs and grant assistance that PGCP is ready to receive.
So I guess my question now then is who decided that these should be the policies to come forth? You worked in a group, right? I'm asking Vice Chair Boozers Struthers.
Oh, yes. Yes, so this.
Who's going to committee?
Yes, so this is. This, this, no, I, as a board member, requested these ultimately. But they are fully informed by the Climate Change Action Plan Work Group, which is a group of experts we've been working with for a full year. And we, on the twenty fourth, the Climate Change Action Plan will be presented to the board as first reader. So like I said, this is, this is a period, period in time.
But would it make sense, okay, if the, if the committee is gonna present to the board on the twenty fourth? Is that what I hear you saying?
The work group is presenting to the, to the board, the recommendations for the, the year of work that we've been doing. And you'll receive that with the board docs on Friday. And then the final vote will, will be April seventh.
Okay, so I'm just trying to figure out. And I realize that we're at the end of this legislative season. I get that. And I guess if the committee has existed for almost a year, I'm not under, at what time do you bring the administration in or don't you? Is it, is it the ad hoc committee's role to just make this independent?
No, 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 no. I, as an individual board member, asked for us to put these on the agenda in my role.
That, but I'm talking about to take a position to take to the full board. And for me, I always like to hear from the administration. And I don't have a problem going over to administration and saying, we want you to do it. But that's a piece of information that's missing for me.
Right.
That's all I'm saying.
I mean, it sounds like Ms. Irving can accommodate that with
Thursdays meeting.
With the, the board meeting with administration response. Can you clarify, Ms. Irving, how we can work through this? I mean, I know.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things that the chair, the chair is asking. And that is that Dr. Goldson has been in a parallel universe to the CCAC, to the Climate Change Action Working Group since last year. And so she has been apprised and has been following the work of the working group. As a matter of fact, she, their, their report that Vice Chair Boozer Strutter is referring to will have a letter from Dr. Goldson as its first page laying out all the things she, she wants to support from the working group. So, so she's not a silent, she's not a silent partner. I just wanted you to be aware of that, and I hope I captured that, Vice Chair Boozer Strutter as well. Because, and I know that Vice Chair Williams has been engaged also with the CCAC. So this has been an ongoing product for a very long time. So I, so I don't think she will be surprised by any of the recommendations. I think she's read them all as we've been going through. So.
And, and I appreciate that. Thank you so much. So I'll go to Vice Chair Williams.
Yeah, I just wanted to add also that the legislation that is being put forth, it is definitely supported in the world of infrastructure development that's being funded by the federal government. The electrical bus transportation piece is not just the cost of the buses that's been a hindrance in the past. It's also the ability to power those buses up. And so there is a, a whole movement from the federal government to place all of these electric vehicle charging stations throughout the system. So there, this is sort of, it's sort of, is, it makes sense for where we are right now in supporting the legislation that will support us being able to move the climate action things forward. Additionally, there were several staff members that sat on the committee that provided information on how the school system operates to make sure that we were in alignment and not working in a silo. My, my, always my biggest concern, and when I listen to what the legislation states, when the funding doesn't follow it, that is where I always have challenge. And so I think that every year, we're gonna have to make sure we pay attention that it is, it is covered. Operationally, we should be okay because of the difference in cost to operate an electric vehicle versus a gas-powered vehicle. Those costs should basically balance out or not be an added cost to us. Our biggest issue with electric vehicles, solar energy, using the high-vil electric and, and whatever new system, it's always the installation and purchase of that piece of, of equipment. Having Pepco and having support from the state, having support from the federal government will help bring that number down. We just have to make sure we're ready for this. And I believe that's where the Climate Action Committee has brought us to the point that we're ready. We will probably be one of the first school systems to take advantage of this legislation that is going through. So I think it's great that, and I wasn't aware that Dr. Goldson was going to put forth a, a, a letter of support for some, for this information or recommendations that the Action Committee has, will be bringing forward. So.
Okay, but that's not what I, okay, I appreciate that, Vice Chair of the Board Williams. But I did not hear Ms. Irving say that she was going to put forth that, that letter. What I heard Ms. Irving say was that she was going to meet with them on Thursday and a decision would be made. I know I pay a lot of attention to detail and I'm sorry for that. I will, I will vote to support this going to the full board with a caveat. At that, in the, on the twenty fourth, I will have an expectation that the administration will speak to their support or not supporting. Because this is a lot of logistics when I look at it. And when I look at even the monitoring for the, even the decisions that the construction folks will have to make with the building of the sidewalks, unless it's with the new schools, that should be already incorporated in whatever plan that they have. When I, I would just feel more comfortable knowing that we believe within PG CPS, there's a complement of staff that we can tap into that can make these things work. That's where my comfort zone is not there today. But I will vote to move it forward with that caveat that the administration, Ms. Irving, once you meet with them, understand that my concern is about the logistics of getting the work done.
And I think that's a great request, Board Member Mickens Murray, to have it verbalized. Their support or, or some of the challenges that we're gonna be facing because it will be a new way of operating. And we're gonna have to, to move into an era of this transition from fossil fuels and trying to move into renewable energy. It's gonna be painful moving there because it's so different, because it's, it's costly. But having the board admit, I'm sorry, having the administration come and verbally speak it into the record, I think is a great idea.
Yeah, if, especially if they're in support of it. And then I realized that, that there's a lot of money out there, but you still have to get humans to do the work. So that's, that's important to me. Ms. Boozer, a board member, Boozer Strutter, Vice Chair of the Committee.
Yeah, thank you. And I, I, you know, totally agree with that. And I, my, you know, it, it has been some time since we did, went through some legislation with administration. And it wasn't unusual. I remember, you know, my first year, like two thousand and nineteen, where administration did express, administration, my memory is administration would express, you know, the challenges, you know, like what the school system would need to work through because a lot of progress as a board member. the school system would need to work through, because a, a lot of progress, as, uh, Board Member Williams said, is, is some change in movement for systems that don't typically change and move. So it's not unusual for the, for, to hear that, like, yeah, this is going to take some work for administration to figure, figure this out. And, and in some cases, those were much more direct, immediate pieces of legislation. As you could see in a lot of these, these are availabilities. You know, these are us taking a, you know, these getting passed mean there's something more available for us to take advantage of. You know, so that's, that's, that's more of what we're seeing in these bills in terms of, um, it's not like, uh, you know, a bill. I'll give a good example of, you know, we, the board, thought it was important to support the Ready to Read Act, uh, some years ago. Mabe was not supporting it because of local control. And we were informed by the administration, some of their concerns as well. But the board, the board is, you know, we are elected and appointed to, to lead. And sometimes we are in those moments where we, we have, have, uh, you know, we, we're going to have to work through some things on the other side should the, the legislation that the board supports is enacted. So, um, you know, I want to say that, that it's not unusual for administration to, to lay out for us what, what the future would look like once the legislation passes.
Right. And, and, and I'm perfectly aware of that. And I also, I like to lead, but I don't like to set folks up for failure. So when you have enough information, you can make an informed decision. And, and I don't mind pushing people beyond, uh, stretching. I, that's what they call it, stretching. I don't mind employees having to stretch. But I don't want to put them in an impossible position when they're doing several things. So if there's a priority to it, or if there's a timeline to it, that to me makes a little more sense than we, we are trying to do all of this as, everyone. So for me, it's, I just need to hear from the administration. I'll be fine. So, um, any more questions, concerns other than me? Ms. Williams, your hand is still up, but I don't see your face. So I'm hoping that it's left up from the before. So, uh, are we ready for the vote? All in favor?
We need.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Motion passes and, um, and we look forward to hearing from the administration, Ms. Irving. Thank you. Okay, next. Now we will have, and I know I'm mindful of the time. It's quarter after seven. But, uh, we have 5.2 Blueprint Print for Maryland's Future Act Implementation and Accountability. Vice Chair of this committee, Ms. Boo, uh, Board Member Boozer Struthers, will provide us with an update from the Mabe Ad Hoc Committee meeting.
Yeah, thank you so much, Chair Mickens Murray. I, I can make this really quick. So, um, now that the Accountability Implementation Board of the Blueprint for Maryland's Future is now moving forward, and there's more clarity, we, and, and the board and administration can now work on these timelines or these new timelines that this legislation will fix. We now can be on a regular schedule of the oversight piece of implementation. These are the reports that go back to the, this MSD and the, in the Accountability Board. This is not, this is not like where academic achievement works on the, on the blueprint. This is the other end of implementation and accountability. We are demonstrating to the Accountability Board that we are a fully active board engaged in, with our administration on, uh, the implementation before these, you know, and some of the timing should work where we see the reports and then they go to the full board. You know, there's, there's, you know, we'll learn how this will go once the timelines are settled. But, uh, and in my service with Mabe, I sit on the Ad Hoc Committee on the Blueprint for Maryland's Future with, um, 12 of the 24, uh, school districts. And what we, we are doing is we are learning from each other how to, how to be the best stewards and overs- oversight of the blueprint so that ultimately, you know, we, we'll, we'll be held accountable. But I also believe PG CPS is going to be celebrated, you know, because we will be doing this right. And so this is the appropriate governance location in our system for this. So we are establishing this agenda item that Dr. Libby and Dr. Goldson and the Implementation Team has an open, uh, invite, you know, for, to make sure this is on our agenda at the appropriate times. And so that, that is, you know, what we've established tonight. So if, if anyone has any questions, please let me know.
Okay, I appreciate that. So this will be a, uh, an agenda item for the Governance Policy and Governance Committee going forward. So make sure that the administrator, administration understands that. And, uh, we just don't want it to be a placeholder. We need information. Okay, that's good. Any questions from any other committee members around this, um, item being added to the agenda? No? Okay, good. Alrighty, so that brings us to 6.0, follow-up next steps. So follow-ups from previous meetings will be posted on board docs upon receipt. The next Policy and Governance Committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, March 29th, 2022, at 5:00 PM virtually. Please check the board page on the PG CPS, uh, website for more information. And forgive my husband, he's getting ice. Sorry, you guys, because you hear that. 7.0, closing remarks from me. Thank you all for a very good meeting tonight. I think it was very informative. I still got to get it down and work with Ms. Ellis with my script, but I will work on that, Ms. Ellis, with you. Thank you. But I appreciate all the work that was done for this meeting. And it's evident by, by all the bills that we've covered, by the policies that we addressed. And I mean, even our student member came up with a policy for us that's going to be on a future agenda. So I appreciate all of the efforts. And this is truly a team effort. And we're demonstrating the partnership between this, the administration and the board office. Are there any, uh, any questions, any comments anybody wants to make for the good of the world? If not, may I have a motion to adjourn?
It's been moved.
It's been moved and properly seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you so much, everybody. I appreciate it. We'll see you next time.
Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.